We're live, everyone.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to Order. With that, we will start with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we're grateful today for this beautiful day and sunshine and the good weather. We know this is a day you have made, and we will do our best to rejoice in it. Be with us in this gathering. We ask and pray, Father, that the deliberations made today will be done with the best interests of the citizens of Clay County and the county itself in mind. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here. This is our first meeting with the revised agenda from the ordinance we passed, so we will go through that. It will require some explanation as we go forward, and I will do that as those items come up. Once again, I would remind anyone here to please, when they're making comments, speak into their microphone. Make sure that your, the caller on the mic stand is green. Anyone here from the public? We have a podium right there. Please identify yourself. And as I say with the masks, it sometimes is difficult to hear, so we want to make sure everybody has their opportunity to speak. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
I believe that we approve today's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of the agenda discussion. Are there any additions, deletions, or any other alterations to our agenda as printed? I do have one. An issue came up last night that would, I think, be appropriate for executive session. Mr. Counselor, what, what would you recommend as far as, it looks like a sub-two is where you're at on that?
Correct. Yes, Commissioner, I would request...
Oh, ahead.
I would request the addition of real estate, which is 610.021-sub-two, to executive session. We've had a reasonably urgent real estate matter come up that I think the commission should address, and it came up last evening, which is less than 24 hours' notice, which, of course, we can meet on less than 24 hours' notice, as long as it is somewhat urgent, and this certainly fits that bill.
My, the information I have does lead me to believe that you are correct, and that would be appropriate. Before we move forward, and before I even make the movement to agenda, the amendment, my understanding is that both commissioners have been contacted and have at least some idea of what it is that we are, would be discussing. It is also my understanding that we would have some documentation that we would be able to distribute. So I think, that said, if, I'll go ahead and make the motion, and we'll hold that for discussion. I'd make a motion that we amend today's agenda to include under executive sessions under real estate, which would be sub-two under the Sunshine Law requirements. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm fine with having this on the agenda.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, absolutely. No objection. Sounds good to me.
Very good. Like I say, being in an executive session, I can only answer so many questions involved in it. With that, I will close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
And I'm getting to the point now where I don't believe I need to mention it each and every time, but just for one more run-through, according to our new constitution, the presiding commissioner does not vote except under the circumstances of a tie and other specific circumstances. My not voting should not be construed to be either support or non-support of any vote that we are taking. That brings us back to approval of the agenda as amended. Are there any other additions, deletions, or any other alterations to the agenda as amended? If not, I believe that was Commissioner Carpenter's motion, if you would like to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedules. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, commissioners, the next scheduled meeting would be a business session to be held on Wednesday, March the 10th, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I just want to point out and underscore that that is an evening meeting. We have gone to a system where we will have a mixture of daytime and evening meetings to allow maximum ability for citizens to, to be involved. Honorary resolutions. There are no honorary resolutions listed today. We have two discussion items. So we'll go ahead. Mr. Administrator, if you want to introduce the first discussion item, then we will get started on that.
Commissioners, the first discussion item is to talk about the county administrator, the permanent county administrator, search progress.
And by the way, just again, for a point of information, Mr. Salisbury has come on board as our administrator in an interim or a temporary basis as we go forward. There is obviously no actual end date, but certainly we appreciate the hard work that Mr. Salisbury's put forward. With that, if either commissioner would like to start the discussion, please, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Nolte. I will, I'll just jump right in. I did ask to have this put on the agenda today, just so we can start the conversation. If we need to do any, you know, commission directive, and just going to get the ball rolling, see where we're standing right now. I know there is, there's money allocated within our approved 2021 budget, so I thought we'd just kind of move forward, see what's going on.
Commissioner Carpenter, you have anything you'd like to end the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, it makes sense to move this forward. It is what we committed to the public, and, you know, it could end up being a somewhat lengthy process. I don't think we really have a sense going into it, you know, exactly how long it's going to take to find the person who's the right fit for this role. You know, I know that there had been discussions about perhaps using a firm to help us with the search, and, you know, I think contacting and beginning that process probably makes sense, because, you know, getting some sense on their end of how long that's going to take. But yeah, you know, I do, I think we owe it to the citizens of the county to, to at least demonstrate that we're moving in that direction. So I support the effort.
The, one of the things that we found ourselves in when we had the change of government was, we had a rather short period of time in which to come up with our interim administrator. We were extremely fortunate that we were able to get such a quality person, and I agree, we do need to make sure that we move forward on this process. This time around, we have the ability to take the time necessary to make a judicious and a well-thought-through decision, which I think is pretty much where we're all at. To Commissioner Carpenter's point, I think it would be wholly appropriate for us to use a professional search firm and to, and to cast as broad a net as possible as far as looking for talent from a lot of different areas of the country, and that's going to, I think, best serve our constituents. So, yeah, I think we need to start looking at exactly how we go forward. With the exception of the recent history, you know, none of us have been involved in this kind of a search. So I think, I think we do need to proceed, and I think we need to do it in a, in a organized and studied way, and I look forward to actually, you know, walking through this and coming up with the, with a candidate that would be able to serve us very well going forward, because this person is going to be with us, hopefully, for some time in the future, possibly even beyond our particular terms in office. So certainly, it needs to be well thought out, and I have every confidence that that process will go along, along those lines. So, very good. Any further discussions on this?
Yeah, if I could just get Commissioner Thompson's thoughts on it as well. What do you feel like should be the, I guess, immediate steps or the initial steps? What would you like to see done here in the next few weeks, let's say?
Yeah, Commissioner Carpenter, I think we probably just need to be able to give some directive. I'm assuming our current county administrator is going to help us within this process.
Say, say what the last part of the administrative you said.
That you would help us in this process?
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course. I took this, I took this position to lose it, and so I'm happy to be involved. Excuse me, what I can tell you is, in the, in the rather brief time that we've all been together, I certainly believe I can endorse the need for an administrator. It's a very complex county. It's a county with a lot of, of real estate. It's a county with a lot of employees. It's a county with a lot of different departments and so forth, and I, I certainly, I think I could defend the position of administrator as a necessary position within your county organization, so, and of course, I'm at your service.
Wonderful. Yeah, so I just think we just need to start, you know, if we need to give some commission directive to just bring us, you know, forward, like, you know, if we want three different, you know, agencies that we want to start with, or if there's the top ones that we want to use, or, I've never done this before, so I'm not quite sure how we proceed with this, but I know we probably just need to get the ball rolling. So, I'm open to any ideas.
It does occur to me, excuse me, we all, I think, are aware of other people in county governments. It might not be a bad idea for us to reach out to those who have maybe been through this process and just, you know, do a little bit of research and say, okay, so what were some of the pitfalls? In any process that is complex, you're going to run into unexpected impediments or unexpected circumstance. So if we can reach out to some of our friends who are in other county governments and kind of benefit by their experience, so that when we do start to go forward, we are going in as orderly and as, as good a process as possible. I also want to emphasize, two things I'd like to emphasize. One is, it is more important than usual, given the new constitution, the administrator under that constitution has more specifically delineated powers, and I think that that helps to kind of make it a bit more focused, because we know exactly what the responsibility of this person is going to be, at least under the constitution, and we can really define it to any candidate who wants to know. The other thing that puts us in a very, I think, happy position is, as I said, we don't have a gun to our head, and we're also not dealing with, with a complicated situation with an outgoing commission, or, excuse me, administrator. We are all going along the same path, so that should make this process much more pleasant than, than it could have been. So I see this as being a good opportunity for us to demonstrate how, how the county government has changed, that we can actually engage in, in further change and make further decisions, and do it in a way that is inclusive with all members and the public, and a way that is smooth and not controversial, not confrontational. So I look upon this as a way for us to really show that this is a new county government that the people have put in place at the last election. Did you have anything further?
No, very good. I just appreciate the discussion. I agree with your remarks and Commissioner Thompson's. It sounds like maybe the next step is, is to come up with a list, a short list of executive search firms, and perhaps, you know, consultation with Tom to do that, and then we decide which one, after studying the options, which one we want to go with to get the process going. Does that sound like what you had in mind in terms of the next steps?
Yeah, no, I think that's kind of the path we were going to take here, and I think we just need to be able to give some direction and, and see, see where it takes us.
Perfect. I appreciate you doing that. Thanks.
As it was Commissioner Thompson's discussion item, I'll let you go ahead and have the last word, if you would like, before we move on to the next item.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioner. This is, so, Tom, you're doing a great job, and this is not, you know, this is not like, we're not replacing you. This is just the next step that we've all discussed. So I really do appreciate all your help and your support in being on the new commission. So, and that's why I have every confidence that you're going to help us through this.
And I will do just that.
Navigate this new, interesting road we're on, so.
Right. With that, we will move on.
By the way, I have a, I have a cousin, I have a cousin that's out of work, and so I might want to, we might want to start the search pretty quickly.
Before the benefits run out. Yes. Thank you. And I like this. This is, this is nice. This is, this is great to have a discussion where we not only deal with issues in a substantial way, but we also aren't afraid to, to have a little bit of levity in the situation. So I really do, as someone who's been experiencing some of the less pleasant times in this county, the difference now is night and day from what it was, say, three months ago. So thank you very much for, both commissioners, for making that happen. That brings us to the next discussion item. Mr. Administrator, if you'd like to introduce that.
Commissioners, the next item for discussion is the disposition of the remaining CARES Act appropriations. We've had some conversation on that, but that's, there's progress being made on that. I think it's a good time to kind of talk about that and see what we might want to do going forward.
There has been some discussion, and one of the people leading that discussion has been Commissioner Carpenter. We do have some residual money left over from the CARES funding that we received last May, I believe it was, and there has been some suggestion that we, that we use it to further the vaccination process. I think to start the discussion off, what I would like to do would be to have our auditor just give us an update, just so we know right where we are at this moment, and give us any information, and then I'll go ahead and make a couple of observations, but I do want to turn it over to Commissioner Carpenter. Please proceed.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. Just for a financial snapshot, I think we've discussed it before, but we have $106,262.73. The only reason to defocusate from here is any interest. Treasurer Bob Nance's office might accrue for that, or any bank fees associated. So once we make a decision, I would say we, you know, look at closing that down so we know the exact amount we're going to give, or just give discretion to, say, the remainder of our CARES Act dollars to Operation Safe, the consortium, or however we want to work through it. I know we've had discussions internally about, we, we know the Health Department, we gave them some of our CARES Act dollars last year. There are other parts of that consortium, so I know Commissioner Nolte and administration is looking at having a meeting with that group. And really, in my mind, there are kind of two ways we can go about it. You know, last year, we made a distribution to our community partners based on population, and then we gave a flat percentage to the Health Center. And really, what they were required to do is use it for eligible expenditures, and then report back to us monthly how they used those. So we can do it with that model, say, we're going to give you the rest of our dollars, report back how you spent that, with the understanding that it would be used for vaccines, which are certainly eligible under the CARES Act. Or we could approach them and say, do you have any expenditures for vaccines that haven't been reimbursed by any other federal funding source? And if they have documentation for that, why, we could just, you know, if it's more than what we have, we could give them the rest, and that would be our backup support documentation to report to the state of Missouri for that use. So that's essentially, those are my recommendations as, as far as that aspect. So I believe you had some other upcoming meetings about how to move forward with that?
Sure. Yeah, before I turn it over to Commissioner Carpenter, I just want to kind of give an update. As a result of our open discussions prior concerning these funds, I was approached by Mr. Zabarak with the Health Centers. He asked me to meet with himself and the other partners in Operation Safe. That meeting is scheduled for the morning. This is very opportune, because what I would like to do would be to make sure I have a consensus of what the commission is looking for. The two things that we discussed, and that are certainly on my mind to, to get from them, would be, first off, assurances that these would go specifically to the vaccine, if that is the will of the commission, as opposed to general uses. Secondarily, they, and also, and attached to that would be a, a requesting letter from them. I think, given that this is not general revenue, but specific federal money, I think having a requesting document from them is not going to be too difficult a hurdle for them to climb, and they seem very willing to do that. Secondarily, the Operation Safe was putting together the mechanism to accept this money for this specific usage, and I assume that by this time that they have set that up. So the other thing that I would be asking them to provide the commission with would be the specifics as far as what account it would go to, and just the general mechanics of how the funds would transfer to make sure that we were as accountable as possible with these federal monies. So as part of this discussion, what I would like to be able to do is to make sure that I am, I'm reflecting the will of the commission when I talk to them tomorrow, and then with the idea that we would be able to, to move on this, on this issue. The last thing, I guess, is I want to get from them whether or not there is any particular emergency, if they are running particularly short on cash, or whether doing it through the regular course of business and the commission is sufficient to, to get this job done. But Commissioner Carpenter had kind of taken the lead on this, and I didn't mean to jump in there, but I did want to make sure that I gave you the information. So Commissioner Carpenter, why don't you go ahead and, and take it from there?
Very good. No, I think we're all on the same page, sounds like. You know, I have no doubt that they'll be eager to provide whatever documentation we need, both in terms of justifying expenses, as well as any initial documents setting up the fund transfer and, and all that. You mentioned spending the money on vaccines, you know, just to further clarify, you know, probably the money won't be spent to purchase vaccines, but, but rather the administration of the, the effort to vaccinate people, right? And obviously, there are a lot of administrative costs associated with that. But no, I think this would be a great use of, of these funds. I have no doubt that we can make this happen, and I think it'll help with this process. One additional thing I'd add, even going forward beyond this initial investment, is, you know, there's pending federal legislation that I think is very likely to pass. I think it would make sense to begin in advance, doing sort of a deep dive into that, to see what we're expecting, if anything. You know, there are hundreds of billions of dollars in state and local aid as part of that legislation. I anticipate that, like I say, that it, that it will pass in some form, and that a lot of that money will be coming. I assume some number of dollars will be coming to Clay County, similar to what we experienced with the CARES Act, although undoubtedly, it will be different with a different set of rules. So it probably would make sense to, to start thinking about not only as the legislation is currently understood, the amount of money that we would receive, but in addition to that, you know, creative ways that we can look to spend those funds, so.
By the way, just for a point of information, I did reach out to Congressman Cleaver's office. He sent me some preliminary information that he has, that his office has. I have forwarded that to our administrator. The administrator will make sure that both commissioners get that information so that we can go forward on that. I would recommend, and again, this is a little cart before the horse, but not really, but I would recommend that we put together a similar working group as we did with the rental money that we will be distributing shortly, to talk about how it is we can distribute that, and, and make recommendations to the, to the commissioner on the disposal, disposal of those funds. But first and foremost, we need to get exactly what our parameters are. It'd be nice to know how much, and, and any other limitations that we need to be aware of, so that we can, we can go forward. But I do think we need to be thinking about that. As you said, we need to be contemplating that now, because the money could come rather quickly, and we need to make sure that we are prepared to use it for the purposes it was intended. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have to wholeheartedly agree that I think this is a great use of any unused CARES Act money, be able to put forward with the vaccination process. So you will get, no fight for me on this. I think this would be wonderful.
What I will do is, I will forward whatever information I get, excuse me, from tomorrow's meeting to the administrator, and that information can then be disseminated among the commissioners. The recommendation I would make was, depending on, on exactly what it says, is that, you know, possibly Commissioner Carpenter could put together a resolution pursuant to that, and then we could take that up at, at the most appropriate moment going forward. It would be nice to have that absolutely behind us by the end of the month, which I think is very easy for us to accomplish.
Yeah, sounds perfect. Thank you.
Any, any, since this was, well, I was going to say, I don't know if anybody else has any comments. Did the auditor have anything else before we round off the, no, he does not. Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
None other than support. Anecdotally, it might interest you all and the folks in attendance that their Operation Safe is conducting a three-day vaccination event as we speak, on the grounds of Cerner, today, tomorrow, and Saturday. It appears that the threshold for that event is still folks that are 65 or older, so no matter how quickly they get through that, there'll still be an entire population, and that will have some needs for vaccination. I would, I would suggest that vaccination events will continue for some length of time, and this is, I would agree with you all, this is a good use of those dollars.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to add to that, March 15th is when we'll have our next expansion of eligibility, and so I anticipate that here in Clay County, you know, there will be a huge new group of people starting then that are going to be interested in utilizing that location. So absolutely, I think supporting it makes sense.
Was there any comment or, or thoughts to be expressed from anyone who is in attendance here? Mr. Counselor, I don't know that there are any legal particular questions on this. Did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion?
Not legally, but I would echo the comments about the mass...
Oh, you're right. There you go.
I would echo the comments about the mass vaccination side. I was actually down there yesterday, helping a little bit, and it is a fantastic operation. My understanding is, they did 2,600 people yesterday, and that they, they believe that their total number for the county will be 25,000 by the end of this weekend. So they are, I think, it was a little slow to beginning on the rollout, but they are really moving forward quickly, and what the volunteers are doing down there is fantastic. They are doing everything they can to maximize literally every milliliter, whatever the smallest unit is, of liquid for these vaccinations. One of the things they're doing, I guess, as I understand it, I may get this wrong, but the, the syringes that come from, say Pfizer, I think, the way it was explained to me, comes with a three-millimeter needle, and a kind of a, a technically better needle is a one-millimeter needle for purposes of what they're doing. So they are swapping out every needle to do, to put the one-millimeter needle in, so that they can extract approximately 10% more vaccine each time. So they are receiving, I think yesterday, they received somewhere around 2,300 doses, but they were able to do 2,600 shots. And so they're extraordinarily impressed by everything they're doing down there, and if you have not been down there, certainly, I would encourage you to go down. It's really impressive what everybody's doing.
I appreciate you pointing that out. I didn't realize that, and I think that just drives home the point that the expertise brought to bear by the Health Centers, by the hospitals, and by Cerner certainly is something that bears fruit in that it allows a wider distribution of the vaccine, just by something that I would not have thought would have been that impactful, and that is the, the needles that are used to induce the injections.
Yeah, in fact, what, I guess some people, that's, that was their job all day long, is to swap out needles. That was, that was their sole job, so that they could get more people vaccinated. That was their sole job so that they could get more people vaccinated, and I was incredibly impressed by what they're doing.
Any further comments before we end this discussion from either Commissioner? I see none. That ends our discussion items, public hearings, there aren't listed. Consent agenda, we do not have any, but I will go ahead and make comment on that so as we go forward. The next item we will be taking up would be regular agenda. We will not be voting on these per se individually. I will be looking for consensus on each item from the commissioners as to whether it would go on our consent agenda for next week, or it would go on for regular agenda. Consent would bundle these items together and vote on them as a group. I would remind commissioners that that requires unanimity, so if any commissioner has any inclinations or any preferences that a particular item be put on regular agenda, it will be. No agenda item will be put on consent unless it is unanimous. I would further remind commissioners that when we take up next week's meeting and we begin going through it, any commissioner has the ability to move that item be taken off the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda at that time in case some information comes to light that they feel that would be more appropriate. So, that's one of the features of the new system that we have instituted, and I just want to make sure everybody is clear on that, and also those present and those viewing the live stream are aware of what this new procedure is going to be like. With that, we will start on our regular session. That brings us to first item, which is 2021 Ordinance 9. Mr. Administrator, please.
Commissioners, Ordinance 2021-9 is to approve the amended five-year fee schedule submitted by Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning represented, I'll defer to them.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is a request to amend the planning and zoning fee schedule with the one change being the request to move, remove any reference made to the Clay County Green Build program. The 2021 budget does not include any funds to operate that program for this year, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Very well, thank you. Could you give us just a very overall read for the County Green Build rebate program, just so that there's a broader understanding?
Yes, sir. So, that's an incentive-based program for new residential construction. If the property owner applies for the Green Build rebate, there's roughly a 40-page document that shows what they can do to earn points, and they have to earn a certain level of points. The rebate's anywhere from 50% of their building permit fee all the way up to 100% of their building permit fee. They present that document to Planning and Zoning staff when their build is complete. Planning and zoning staff goes through it, verifies that they achieved either a bronze, silver, or gold level, and then a refund or a percentage of their building permit is refunded to the applicant.
Very good. As I said, we will not be voting on this. What we will do is go ahead and go through a discussion of this item, and then I will ask commissioners their preference on regular or consent for this and the following items. So, with that, are there any questions that could be posed to Mr. Jones or any comments that would like to be made? Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything?
No problem.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I do not, thank you.
I don't either, but on something like this, when we're talking about a rate change, it's my opinion that we may well want this on regular, but I would certainly like to hear what the thoughts are from our other, since it's a fee schedule change. That's one that I think we may well want to consider more deeply. What are the thoughts of the other commissioners?
Commissioner, if you would like to have it on for regular, that's fine. I'm okay with it being for consent next week.
Commissioner Carpenter?
So, yeah, I think if we're, you know, we're sort of establishing a new precedent here with the new consent calendar. I think it makes sense on items that have really a financial component of any kind to tend toward keeping those on the regular agenda. You know, consent items to me, I think generally shouldn't be things that include financial components, would be my approach to it. That being said, obviously, it's a work in progress, and we'll see where things end up, but I would agree that for now, leave it on the regular agenda.
Okay. So, we will, and what I will do is, at the end of this consideration of these items, I will be looking for a motion from one of the commissioners to list out those that would be on regular agenda and those that would be on consent going forward. We don't have specific parameters, or at least maybe we, and maybe we will work through that, but I do agree with Commissioner Carpenter that something that has a financial aspect to it, generally speaking, should probably go on for regular. But once again, this is a process that we're going to have to work through and come to our own conclusions on as we go and come up with our own method of working through these. Are there any other questions or comments? Something else that I would remind commissioners of is, we do have a week here, so that if you want to reach out to staff or gather more information, certainly this is a good opportunity to do so regardless of whether or not a miss consent or regular agenda indicated. Mr. Administrator, did you have anything before we move on?
I do not.
Thank you. That brings us, so the consensus seems to be that we would go for regular on 09. This brings us to 2021-20, excuse me, 2021-62. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, Resolution 2021-62 is to prove an agreement with MoDOT for some work at the intersection of Highway A and Northeast 112th Street. That is submitted by Highway, and they are here to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Commission. Carl Walters with Clay County Highway. The agreement is, MoDOT's brought to us to realign and put in turn lanes at 112th and A Highway. Being the purpose of Liberty Growing, we got the north Liberty High School to the south. A lot of the traffic and stuff that's coming to the north is turning on 112th, so they're asking for us to be in partnership. It's nothing to our cost, everything is on them. They just want to make sure that they can work out of our right-of-way to complete this project, to put in a southbound turn lane to the left, and then coming from the north, put in a left and right turn lane, so that it makes safer for everybody in that neighborhood or area traveling. In conjunction with that, they want to realign the east and west 112th Street as well to make it safer.
Will this require the expenditure of any county funds?
No, it will not.
Thank you. Questions for our deputy administrator for highways? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Thompson? I'm working on it. Mr. Administrator, did you have any questions?
Nothing.
Okay. I think this is something that we can, I think this is one of those issues that can go either way. What is the, what is the thought, although I do notice on this form, and maybe this is a good question to ask the administrator, just to verify, on request for commission action, it has, it can be either checked for a consent or regular item. I assume that's just talking about this meeting and not necessarily a recommendation to the commission to go forward, but that's just for this specific meeting. Is that correct?
I think the, yes, you are correct.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that so that the commission, you know, again, being a new process, didn't see that as some sort of a staff recommendation. It's just an indication for today's schedule, so don't.
That reflects the agenda item as it is today.
Correct. So, and we would see this next week, if the commission so chooses to put it on consent, then that other box would be checked as we go forward. Very good. Is there a recommendation from either commissioner on which agenda of regular consent this should go on?
Yeah, I'm fine with putting this on consent, for sure.
I'm sorry, which?
On the consent calendar.
On consent. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any reservations about that? Are you good with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and the consensus of the commission then is to put 2021-62 on for consent next week, again with the knowledge that we can, of course, revisit that decision as it arises. That brings us to 2021-63 and 2021-64, which are companion issues. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, Resolutions 21, 2021-63 and 64 are companion resolutions to approve offering the Passport Service, a master agreement with Gil Barco Company for the Passport Service, which is an electronic transaction process at Paradise Point Marina as well as the Camp Branch Marina within the Park System, and Parks is here to speak on that.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donna Koontz, Facilities. This would allow us to upgrade our, at the site of the pumps, to take EMV-chipped credit cards, which is a much more secure.
Could you speak just a little bit more loudly?
This would allow us to take EMV-chip credit cards for a more secure method of handling processing payments for our patrons that buy gas at those two locations.
Am I right that the system we have right now does not accept the chips? It's the traditional sort of swipe for a credit card?
That is correct, and most cards now have the chip in them, and this upgrades our software.
Welcome to the 21st century, yes. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Thompson? Okay. Mr. Administrator, do you have any thoughts that you'd like to express?
I just think it's a proper step to take. It will alleviate any sort of heartburn that folks that utilize our Parks System and give them one less reason to think about not coming back. Makes it more simple and efficient.
Does this involve any expenditure of county funds? Deputy Administrator?
It does, because it is involving purchasing the package for the software, which also gives us the customer service and help desk support, so if it goes down on, say, a busy weekend like Fourth of July, we have tech support to get us up and running.
I would point out to commissioners that we just discussed the idea of having expenditures, that those are generally more appropriate for regular. When we're talking about these kind of expenses, certainly it's the sort of thing that we could set aside, given the rather modest and the upgrade quality of this particular issue, but I would ask if there is a, if there's a preference that either commissioner would like to express as far as which agenda this would appear on next week.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, I think in the vein of the conversation from earlier, I think it makes sense to leave this on the regular agenda, personally.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson?
I'm fine with that.
So, that would be, you did say regular agenda, correct? Thank you. That brings us to 2021-65. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-65 Resolution is to approve a revocable event license with the North American Trail Ride Conference for an event later this year that they call the Jesse James Ride Out. It's a trail ride event, and it is submitted by Parks, who can speak further on the issue.
Please proceed.
Yes, Commissioners, this is to allow approximately 60 riders will participate in this event. This is giving permission for them to be on our park property and to hold their trail ride there.
Is this an event that has been reoccurring, or is this a first time?
No, this is normally a historical event that takes place.
And am I right that any expenses that the county would cover would either not exist or would be fairly minimal? Is that a good assumption?
There is not an expense per se to the county, other than this agreement allows them to have a reduced rate to enter the park, so they're not paying the full entrance fee into the park.
Great. Questions? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Sounds like a good event.
It does. Be looking forward to that. I'm not a rider, so I don't know that I'd be able to appreciate it as much as many others, but certainly it's good to see these events come forward. Is there a sense from the commission as to whether or not this should be on next week's consent or regular agenda?
I'm good with consent.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm fine with consent.
Very good. In that case, we will have that down as a consent item for next week. Thank you, Deputy Administrator. That brings us to 2021-66. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, Resolution 2021-66 is to approve one-half of the annual payments that we make to Synergy House Incorporated. By one-half, we pay a payment in January, and we pay a payment in July every year to Synergy House. This would be to authorize the payment of the January obligation.
And while this does involve, obviously, the expenditure of county funds, this is something that has already been specifically voted on during our budget process, so it requires no additional funding other than that which was already authorized under our budget, so as far as I can tell, it does not, this particular document only allows us to go forward in a vote that has already been taken. Is that a fair characterization?
That's absolutely correct, just as you stated it.
Are there any questions from the commission on this issue? Commissioner Carpenter?
If I may, to our administrator, so we've had a couple of these items already, too, where we budgeted the funds, and then we go on to do an additional resolution approval process like this. I'm not sure that I have full clarity, and so I'm quite confident that the public doesn't, in terms of when that's required, in terms of money that we've already budgeted doing this additional step. Do you have any clarity on that for me?
I apologize for not fully understanding the question.
So, the discussion that we just had was that we've already approved these payments to Synergy, is that right?
Correct.
So, on this item, what is requiring us in this instance to do an additional resolution on those payments if we've already budgeted them? And I'm a big fan of Synergy and look forward to supporting this. Absolutely. They do important work and deserve this money, but do you understand the question?
I think now I understand. This is simply a function, you're right, the, we have a relationship with this board, we have committed financial support to this board. I think my proper response to your question is that this is strictly an official action endorsing the payment so that the treasurer can write the check. Basically, it's just us authorizing that the treasurer can submit the check and pay these folks the one-half of the relationship that we've committed to previously.
Very good. And if we were to not pass the resolution, what would happen?
If we did not, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, if we didn't pass the resolution.
And that's okay, by the way.
We obviously can't write the check until somebody does do that, so I guess that would put us in arrears with the Synergy Inc., and that would probably involve some further conversation, and I don't know that there'd be any legal actions necessarily, but it would mean that we would not be complicit with our previous commitment to them.
Okay. So, each time we have an outside organization that we're sending county funds to, we pass it in the budget, we have the discussion, we have that whole process, but with each of those organizations, at the time at which we're going to actually send the dollars, a resolution like this has to be approved, and is that across the board?
My understanding, my experience in this brief time we've been here is that, yes, that is standard across the board.
Okay. That's very helpful, I appreciate it. And if other commissioners have any other information on that, I would love to hear it, but I was just curious.
One of those efficient functions of government.
Yeah, very good.
My understanding is that this is largely a ministerial function, so it's just a matter of following this step through. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator? In your estimation, I realize that it may not be in your direct experience, given the time you've been here with the county.
I agree with your comment, but I defer to legal for further comment.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a little different than potentially some other outside agencies. My belief, my recollection is, this is actually a funding mechanism that comes from fees collected by the county for specific statutory purposes. I believe marriage licenses, I think, may have this, and I'm certain, 99% certain, that we collect a fee at the circuit court level. And so, this is just a distribution of. And so this is just a distribution of those funds, but this is more statutory than other fund allocations that we may do.
Something I'd like to point out, too, is if this were to go onto regular agenda, that does not reflect, and I think Commissioner Carpenter has expressed what I think we all feel here on the Commission, and that is, Synergy does great work, and we are certainly all very supportive of them, but there is absolutely nothing wrong with examining it more closely. As I say, I don't think that is a reflection on any lack of confidence in Synergy House, it's more just a matter of going through a process. I would point out, though, that this is something of a check and balance, in a way, so that if circumstances change, we would then look at it again, but I think that would be a highly unusual circumstance.
I think that's right. And so another thought that I think is accurate here is, I believe the statute talks in terms of domestic violence shelters. And so in Clay County, Synergy qualifies. But I'll give you, so if for some reason another entity also qualified, we would then have a discussion about the allocation, perhaps, between those entities. But my understanding is, at this moment, Synergy qualifies and maybe no other in Clay County.
Great. So, yeah, with that being said, and like I said, we are all following a learning curve here, so the idea of having further discussion on any given item, I think is a healthy thing, and I don't think we'd be taken amiss by anybody who's paying attention to our discussions. Does that, does that help at all, Commissioner? Commissioner Thompson, do you have any thoughts you'd like to express?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Administrator, I think you've already kind of, okay. Is there, and I should be asking all along, if there's anyone here present who would like to comment from the public. I'm sorry, I've kind of not been keeping up on that. It's the new system here that's kind of keeping me on my toes a bit. So is there a sense from the Commission, would anyone like to make a suggestion as to either regular or consent for twenty twenty-one sixty-six?
So personally, I'm fine with consent. You know, I think, obviously, this does contain a financial component, which we've previously discussed, but, you know, it's not a change, it's not a shift, it's just a reaffirmation of something we've already done. So, you know, that feels like a distinction that is worthy of a distinction in terms of how we consider it, and I'm perfectly fine with putting it on consent, personally.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm fine with consent agenda.
Very well. The consensus of the Commission is that twenty twenty-one sixty-six would appear on the consent agenda for our next meeting. That brings us to twenty-one Ordinance eleven. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, Ordinance twenty twenty-one eleven is to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year to accommodate the new emergency rental assistance program. I will let the Auditor add any comments to that.
Mr. Auditor, please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. So twenty twenty-one Ordinance eleven is a follow-up on our previous authorization from the Commission to establish the fund, which I need in order to do that. The Treasurer received the money from the federal government, Treasurer announced, and so this is a way to budget those dollars. The Act requires that we can spend no more than 10% on administrative costs to operate this program. And so that's what this does, is to essentially establish that control, so to speak, that we have separate accounts. We're going to have the new budget, because this happened after our budget process for the revenue account, and then we're going to split those dollars, that $3.6 million, into a 90% bucket for the actual program cost distribution, as you see on your first expenditure account, and then the second expenditure account would be your 10% administrative cost. And that way, we'll be clear when we make these payments, as I'll discuss later, of what account that needs to come from, and it's very easy to track and report, as will be required to do for, to the, to the United States Treasury Department. So, again, just background, this is for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It came from the Second Stimulus or Consolidated Appropriations Act, and Clay County was eligible because we have over 200,000 citizens, but it is for residents living outside of Kansas City, so that there's no duplication of benefits. So that's what this is, to establish essentially the budget for the program.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. First question, I'm a little bit like a broken record, but it's, I think, a good one to ask, and that is, this is not any additional expenditure of funds, this is just the reorganization of funds in the proper, in the proper column, the proper accounts. Is that fair?
I'd say it's accurate, yes. So this is a, just a budget, it's really not actual expenditure, it's just setting the budget. And really, none of this money is county money, too. I want to clarify, this is all, we're administering it for the purposes of the federal law. So this will go to actual landlords and utility companies for those in arrears for their rent and utility costs, and then any administrative dollars to operate it. So, but no, this isn't, I'll speak to that on the next resolution about how will, this will actually be spent, but this is just setting the budget for it.
A couple of questions, perhaps, for the Counselor. One is, is there any virtue in putting this on the regular as opposed to consent agenda as a, as a way of establishing further accountability to the federal government when they request that? Is there any particular advantage or disadvantage to whichever agenda it fits on? I don't see it as being so, but I wanted to ask.
No, I don't think so either. I think my only suggestion would be that this ordinance can be missed, resolution would be kept. It makes sense to me that it would be on consent together on regular.
I think that is good. The other thing that occurs to me is that being on consent, obviously, they will not be objects of discussion at our next meeting. And it's not a reflection that this is, we have any doubts about going forward on this, but it occurs to me that if we put it on regular agenda, that would give a further opportunity for the Commission to discuss it publicly and to make sure that we are as transparent as possible. So from that point of view, I'm wondering whether that might be a good way to go, so that we would have the agenda item to then go ahead and discuss and get further public input. Do you have any thoughts, Mr. Counselor?
Again, I'm fine with that approach.
Okay. I think it is something that generally would be appropriate for consent, but I think there are reasons that we may well want to put it on regular that would be independent of any hesitation we have going forward with the program. But I would reach out to both Commissioners and see if they have any questions, first off, and second off, if they have any preferences on how this would appear. So Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything?
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have any comments right now or any questions. I'm just, I'm glad to see that this is on the agenda today, and we're moving forward with getting this set up. It doesn't appear to be any additional cost to the county. Like you said, this is money that has been allocated, that we are going to be, you know, divvying up accordingly. So I personally feel comfortable if we were to put it on either one. It's just, if there's another Commissioner that feels that we should put on regular, I'm fine with that as well.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, I think, I think regular makes a lot of sense. Let's move forward with that.
Okay. Let's go ahead and put that on consent, but I think the recommendation to keep those two together.
So to clarify, you mean on the regular account?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. I think that there is a, a lot of virtue in what the Counselor had said about keeping those two together, so both of them appearing on the same, the same part of the agenda might be a good place to, for us to find ourselves. And in fact, if we do that, we might even ask staff to, well, one's an ordinance and one's a resolution, but we might explore the idea of making them companion issues. I'm not sure that's necessary. But the consensus, then, is to have it on for regular agenda. That brings us, were there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. That brings us to twenty twenty-one sixty-eight. Yeah, sixty-eight, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash sixty-eight is a companion to the previously discussed ordinance. It is to approve agreements with First Call Technology Company, known also as Community Care Link, and also an agreement with United Way. These people are, have been selected or identified to help us deliver the programs associated, programs and funds associated with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and so this is simply to codify that relationship. Mr. Auditor?
Mr. Auditor, please proceed.
Thank you, yes. So following up on that ordinance, and this will be good to have on the, on the regular agenda, I have requested the folks who are going to be helping the county administer this program to, just invited them, if they're willing to be able to attend, they can come Wednesday and show, you know, who they are and introduce themselves. But essentially, this is the overall plan of how the county will administer the Emergency Rental Program from the federal government that we received. So the plan, as the Minister has previously discussed, is that this will go live on March 15th. We have confirmation from our application provider as far as having that available, and we will list on our website the nonprofits who will be, who citizens, tenants, landlords, utility companies can reach out to, to get assistance with this program. We'll have five nonprofits. So let me step through Resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-eight. Essentially, what we've done here is shown how the breakout will occur between that previously discussed 90% and 10%. With the actual program costs, what we are going to do with the five nonprofits who have been selected by our, essentially, program administrator that the county chose, is United Way. Now, we came to United Way because they are working with both Jackson County, City of Kansas City, and Clay County as a regional effort, and Commission, Commissioner Ulti made contact with our, our contact with United Way, and they recommended to us, five nonprofits who are going to be able to administer this program, like I said. So if you go down to the program cost section of that 90% budget, we are initially going to release 10% of our, of our dollars. The reason being, just so that we want to ensure that we, everything is running smoothly, make sure we get the reports back from those nonprofits as far as how these dollars are spent, and then we will release further after that. It will probably go fairly fast. If you look at, you know, where they can invest, it's around an average household of need of $3,000, and so if we're talking about, you know, $60,000 each nonprofit initially, we'll, we'll make a decision then of how to distribute. But ultimately, breaking out that 90%, we're going to get to, we're going to get to an overall budget per nonprofit to distribute of around $655,000. So that's the initial plan for that 90%. And then for the administrative costs, we do have that 10% breakout for that. So 3% of our overall grant will be for the online application provider. This is going to be a large role, and we are working jointly with Community Care Link and First Call, which is a, a separate organization of a existing nonprofit that deals with, I believe, drug abuse, and, and so that they already have established a case management system that Kansas City identified that, that is, that would be good for this program. And so we're working with Kansas City jointly, simply because this is going to allow us to really prevent that duplication of benefits. Because as I mentioned, this is going to be for tenants living in Clay County, but not part of Kansas City. So when they go, when we have all this data within one application provider, we're going to easily show and be able to check as a, as a method of preventing fraud, that this individual hasn't, or tenant or landlord, hasn't already applied within, within Clay County. And clearly, the address is going to be a big determination, determining factor of that as well. So that's our application provider, but they're doing a number of things as well, as you can see in the underlying contract. They are also going to daily, basically, distribute applications as they come in, online applications to First Call as they receive them. They're going to send these out to our five nonprofits and do that in a way, we've had discussions about, is this going to be regionally based, as far as where the nonprofits are located? From logistical purposes, it's going to work best just to distribute these on an even basis, so that we meet the demand and not overwhelm one agency versus another. So that's going to be a big role for them. They're also going to play a critical piece as far as reporting. They're going to give us data on a weekly, monthly basis, and also for following audit purposes. This is the data we're going to need to report to the U.S. Treasury, and so that's going to be a very large piece. So that's an important part of our administrative costs. The second piece is United Way. 1% of our overall grant, and I'll just say, this is, you know, that, that's very, you know, they've done so much work, so that's very, not a big ask for them, because United Way, just with the expertise that they gave us as far as how federal grant awards or manage, has been, has been just extremely important to us. They vetted out and sent out requests for nonprofits in Clay County who could manage this program, and recommended those, or, you know, reviewed those applications and looked at their history, as far as are these nonprofits managing federal grants, have they had any issues in the past, are they going to be able to have the staffing capable to meet this program? And so, so vetted that and played a big role in that. But now, since that decision's been made pending Commission approval, they're going to play a big role of ongoing coordination with the program as far as regular meetings with these nonprofits, make sure the profit, the project's going well, any issues we come up with, working with the online application provider. And they are also offering their two-on-one service to us, so anyone calling for assistance can be sent the right way. Again, I mentioned that they're working, it's a regional effort with both Jackson County, Kansas City, and Clay County, all working together in the Kansas City metro on this, on the Missouri side. So, and then our actual case managers, the last part of this administrative cost are the five nonprofits. This is based on the responses we got and just the dollars we had available, those were the five we selected. Now, initially, I came upon this thinking we would just distribute what we had left evenly, but this was actually a recommendation from United Way to ask them what they need, because every agency is different, and this is, these were the responses we got, and made it fit, along with a $1,000 technology stipend for an extra computer, to be able to manage these, these dollars and be able to use the application. So we have a fairly good regional spread, I'd say. You know, we have one location in Carney, but these will be from Community Action Agency, they have a Maple Woods location, Carney Assistance Center, Metro Luton Ministry, Northland Healthcare Access, and Salvation Army, which has a location in Excelsior Springs. A good spread, but again, a lot of this is going to be online applications. If, should that not be available to happen, certainly, they can call these locations. We're going to post their contact information on our website, call them directly with help to walk through the application, because there is a lot of documentation that is required for this program. To be eligible, you have to prove that you're below 80% of the median area income, you have to show that you are in rental arrears or needing rental assistance, potentially could be evicted, and you have to show that you're in financial distress or you couldn't pay your rent because of COVID specifically. So those are, you know, very strict guidelines as far as meeting that. And so these case managers are going to be the ones actually in the field helping tenants, not the county, you know, walk through those steps and get that documentation. You know, if there is an issue and they, they absolutely can't get it, the guidance from the U.S. Treasury did allow an attestation statement. So that's something that the case managers are going to deal with on a case-by-case basis. So that's, that's essentially the plan, and these, you know, all these costs for the administrative costs, what we build monthly invoice, we're not giving this all out front. So that, that's essentially the plan. I would say the missing piece I don't have yet I would say the missing piece I don't have yet, and that I want to bring to the next meeting are agreements with the nonprofits, the five nonprofits, MOUs and, and contracts. They're in draft form. I got the first draft copy late afternoon. We had some minor tweaks we wanted to work on. And so I, I want to bring those to you, but it's definitely, it's basically going to say that they need to abide by the terms of the federal grant and, and then agree to also our funding mechanism as far as for the staffing costs. So that's the last agreement. So we have agreements with our application provider, United Way here, and then by next meeting with the five separate nonprofits. And so that's what this resolution is. I know I said a lot there, but I wanted to try and explain, take some time and explain what this all means. It's, it's a, you know, this program, the benefit of it, when we found out about it, the, the, you know, interpretation or purpose behind the law was to really allow those larger communities with over 200,000 to be able to under, since they have those resources and can understand their community, to use, they even mentioned using nonprofits to be able to distribute that, as opposed to having to, you know, go through the state or, or some other methods. So we're fortunate to be able to use it in that manner, and I think this will be a, a good program for, for those in need. So with that, I'll open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. To me, this seems like something that with this serious amount of money, certainly, it's, it demands being on regular agenda. I don't think that's going to be much of a discussion. I do have a question for Mr. Counselor, though. The auditor had made reference to follow-up agreements with each one of the individual entities here. So if we were to take that up in next week, those agreements would certainly not have appeared on a work session prior to a business session. There would be a couple of ways that we would look at that. I don't know if those contracts would be required to be executed at the same time as, as this document. I don't know that I necessarily, I, I, I don't have a thought right at the moment as to whether that would constitute an emergency. The other thing that crosses my mind is they could be submitted as amendments. If we go that route, I would suggest that those, those be posted at the earliest possible moment as amendments on our website. But I, I'm not sure exactly how. The other thing that occurs to me is that one way to approach this would be to ratify each one of the individual supporting contracts before we pass the overall contract, just in case there was some change. That way, we, it would be reflected. Does that seem like the proper order would be to, to approve each one of these contracts and then approve the overall agreement?
So, you know, the auditor and I have been working through this a little bit. I've looked at some of the draft contracts. So one, one approach, and you, you know, I understand this is semi-time sensitive. If we approve this resolution next week, the language in the, in the resolution allows for the, the execution of documents necessary to facilitate. I've looked at some of the agreements. We will continue to look at any more that come in. So one approach is that I think this resolution allows for the execution of those, essentially as long as we believe that they, that they're, that they're appropriately put together and we can move forward with this. Now, you know, again, we could certainly, there's no question, we could separately, this commission could separately approve each agreement by resolution, no question about that. But I think the way this agreement is, this resolution is written, we could also empower the, the commission or the administrator, and I want to talk about that in just a second, to execute them pursuant to this resolution.
So what you're saying is, we could, in fact, go forward with this, and then the administrator could, as long as it was in compliance with what we have here, go forward with the other agreements? I think, I have every confidence that those would be brought forward and that we would have a chance to discuss them publicly, but by and large, it would, that would be a way for us to go forward. And I guess what I'm looking for, in addition to the information, is a possible recommendation that we should consider as a, as a commission.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, if the commission's comfortable with, you know, we pass this resolution, this resolution will then generate contracts to execute. We will need to empower someone to do that. The RCA has specific dollars for each entity. And as long as the, the contract is acceptable, and that, that would probably fall to me, and as long as it is within the dollars, and that would, I think, fall to the auditor and Mr. Salisbury. I think if you have, as long as those two things are met, that we have a reasonably good contract and that we are within the dollars that you are on notice of, I think we could move forward. And I'm comfortable with that as a way to keep this moving forward as quickly as possible. But again, I'm also completely fine if, if you want to review each agreement and pass each agreement before, before they're executed, I'm fine with that, too.
I think it would be good to have them presented to, to us as, and just, at, at a very minimum, we say, yes, we, we do believe that those are compliant. So I mean, not necessarily a vote on them is a, another option, but a way of just our review of them and then, yes, those, those seem to be in compliance. Those, those, we believe are in compliance with 2120, 202168. I want to go ahead, because this is, it gets a little complicated, and I, I would like to go ahead and see if the other commissioners may well have a question on that to kind of clarify that, to make sure we're all, I, I think we're all pretty good with the, at least, it appears that we are all reasonably good with the actual execution of the agreement. I think what we're looking at now is technically how we go forward in making sure that we are exercising proper oversight and that we are moving forward in the most efficient way possible. So I think none of us have any qualms about the virtues of going forward with this program. It's just a matter of a, a more methodology. So Commissioner Carpenter, did you have any questions on that?
Yeah, I do. You know, not necessarily directly related to the last line of questioning, but of course, support the program and getting these funds to the folks who need it. I, I do have a question about the distribution of these dollars. You know, I took a little bit of time to look at the eligibility, you know, like I said, 80% or lower of the average income. You have to be in arrears, either utilities or rent. You have to rent your home. You have to have some demonstrable connection to COVID, et cetera. My sense of it, without knowing for sure, but my guess is the 3.2 million after administrative costs is not enough dollars to provide utility and rental arrears assistance to every citizen in Clay County who, every resident in Clay County, I should say, who, who qualifies under those criteria, which means ultimately that some will see the benefit and some will not. And it occurs to me that a lot of that is going to come down to who is aware of the option of the assistance and who's not, which means that, you know, a lot of the work that gets done through these nonprofits and through the caseworkers who go out into the community to, to work with folks who are rented their home and, and who meet the criteria. My concern would be making sure that we do this in an equitable way across the board. So regionally, we have different, you know, communities here in Clay County. And then in terms of things like race and gender and things like that. Because, you know, I don't think we want to end up in a place where, at the end of this, you know, we've distributed the 3.2 million and ultimately, there's some significant extent to which it's out of balance in terms of who received the funds and who didn't, and who was made aware of the availability of the funds and who never heard about it. So I, I am wondering what thought has been given to, and, and whether or not these agreements with the nonprofits include language addressing this, but in, in terms of making sure that we are reaching out to communities across Clay County in an equitable way. And that question would be for the auditor, but also for our kind of administrator or my fellow commissioners, whoever wants to discuss it.
Yes, certainly, Commissioner Carpenter. I guess the only thing I'll, I'll add in there is, you know, there is priority in the, in the bill given to those under 50% median income, as well as unemployed. So there is that, I will say. And to cover arrears first, before considering any forward paying, as far as the, the level of need, another component to think about as far as meeting the overall need, my understanding is that the allocation of how this was done from U.S. Treasury was that every state got money and then every jurisdiction with over 200,000 citizens. Now, they calculated that. We were initially anticipating somewhere on the level of over 7 million. And my understanding is that half of that is held by the state, which is being distributed by Missouri Housing Development Corporation, MHDC. And so there is a, a reallocation period in September where the U.S. Treasury is going to take a snapshot of what has been distributed and then make a reallocation. So obviously, our goal is to have everything essentially, if not actually spent by then, at least encumbered, so to speak, with enough applications in the, in the logs to say that we, we still need it. And, and in that case, there, there could be a reallocation from Treasury with that standpoint. And there are also ongoing discussions. There's a call today with the state. We do a bi-weekly catch-up call with the opt-in communities that we have. So we're talking Green County, Jackson City of St. Louis, City of Kansas City, St. Louis County, Jefferson, to, you know, see where we're at and, and plan and coordinate marketing procedures. State is marketing this as well with what they call Housing Stability Services. But what I'm trying to get to, the point is, the, the state holds, you know, half of our, half of our dollars. And so there's discussions with the state of, are, are they going to process applications on, on our behalf at some point? Currently, they are not. Currently, the approach with the state has been to let these communities begin, and that's why we're doing this. Frankly, it was, you know, the state has started, but they didn't have a landlord application. There has to be both for the law. So we have a landlord application ready that's going to go with the tenant at the same time, as well as the Treasury changed their guidance just last week to allow a little more flexibility. So we, we wanted to make sure we had all of our ducks in a row and make sure our application was ready, of course, an online application. So I'll just say that as far as the, the need. And then the marketing plan, I, I did, we did not budget all the administrative dollars, if you notice, in the 630209 account. So I will say, you know, about $20,000 left. That's not much, doesn't get as much, but commission can certainly entertain that if you want to look at something. Ideas have been thrown around about utility companies can include this in their statements. You know, obviously, with the press, the county can do something on, on the launch. And, and yes, the, the nonprofits themselves are going to have their, their client base. And one of them brought up how, one of them, in fact, Northland Healthcare Access managed Clay County money from the CARES Act. They received it from Kansas City. We gave it to Kansas City. Kansas City gave it to the Northland Healthcare Access. They did $200,000 in rental assistance, but it's with COVID dollars. So that, they're already familiar with this type of program. It's just a new bucket of money. And they mentioned how they did postcards to residents they knew, and it was very successful. So certainly, those are things I'll take into consideration. I'm open to ideas.
I, did you have any further, go ahead, please?
I mean, I have more to talk about, but there looks like there's a couple of folks who would love to talk, and I'd love to hear their thoughts.
Yeah, then, and obviously, we can, we can come back and, and pick up any questions that you additionally have. There was another comment that, that somebody would care to make?
Me. Oh, Kathy, go ahead, please.
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor.
Could you speak up just a little bit more?
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor.
Thank you.
We can provide for you the names and addresses of everybody that's in an apartment building, if you want to send out a mass postcard to apartment dwellers. I mean, we don't know if houses are rented or not. We have no idea, but we could provide that if Clay County was interested in sending a postcard to...
That might be, that might be helpful. In fact, we may want to reach out to our, our folks at United Way and some of the other people and see if we can, in a way, coordinate that. The other thing is that one of the advantages of, of using the system we, we're currently using is that if a citizen is wanting to apply, they may or may not be within the city, the City of Kansas City, because we're using, there's a lot of platform overlap. If a person is, say, living in Gladstone and they get onto the, and they, they think they're in Kansas City or they're mistaken, it will direct them over. So hopefully, that will allow us to, in a way, piggyback on, on the promotional efforts of Kansas City, because they would go to the Kansas City site, which would then, because of our cooperation, direct them to the Clay County site. And we could make that, we could make that connection with that, that individual more quickly, and it, they wouldn't be lost in the paperwork. And the last thing we, I think any of us want is to have a, a citizen, no matter what the service, have to bounce back and forth between different phone calls. So this seems like the, the method that we're using will, to some degree, reduce that a reasonable amount.
We also have email addresses, not on everybody, but we could maybe provide those also. And then I have one question. Anybody that receives this funding, are they going to pay income tax on that? So you've got somebody that's in arrears, $3,000 or $4,000, and they get the money to pay their arrears. Is that going to be taxable? I don't know. And I don't know that the auditor would know, but I think that before somebody jumps into that, they'd want to know if 75% of that or 25% of that's going to be, they're going to have to pay tax on that, too. I'm just asking questions I don't honestly know.
No, yeah. Clay County Auditor Victor Holman. Now, I appreciate the question from the assessor. I would just say, I, I wouldn't say I'm for certain on that. I would have to research it. I just know that, one thing to clarify is that these, these dollars actually go to the landlord companies and utility companies. So as far as taxation, I don't know if the tenant sees that as income. Now, I'm not, I'm not offering tax advice here, but I'm just saying, you know. Well, so we're collecting W9s from the landlord companies to, to be able to pay them. The, the nonprofits will be paying them as fiscal agent. They are essentially, in grant terms or Single Audit Act terms, they are the sub-recipient whom we will monitor. And they, they will make those payments. Now, we'll, we'll make administrative payments to those nonprofits, but, yeah. So that's a very good question. I'll, I'll research it.
I think, and I'd like to go to the administrator. He had some comments, but if, if he has any thoughts on this particular issue as well, given your background with the Small Business Administration, many of these landlords are, in fact, small businesses. So your insights may well, may well be, may be very valuable, but I want to give you the chance to comment how you, how you would like to on this.
Okay, just a couple. And don't want to get too far off the rails here. Historically, in these, in these previous stimulus packages, taxes have been essentially in a, in a waiver environment. Can't predict that. What, just kind of echoing off what the auditor said and Kathy as well, obviously, any, any dollars that make their way into a landlord's pocket for rent would be, I would think, subject to the same taxation rules that they would be subject to if, if the check came from a nonprofit or if it came from the, the renter themselves. So that's, but, but the point is, these, these renters will not be financially obligated because the dollars will really never even pass through them. It'll be going straight to, to Commissioner Carpenter's comments about messaging. There, that's a great point, and it's an important point. So from that standpoint, I know for a fact that the state is actively marketing this program. They are, they are blasting every newspaper, large and small in the state, with press releases relative to this. So you've got that going. We've got this information on the website. As it gets further developed, it'll become a little bit more detailed. The people that come on the website, we're going to use our social media platform to send that information out. But the real key component to all this is the nonprofits, who very much know they're patrons. And so we'll be having the, the nonprofits as they get access to these funds. They will have a pretty good idea of who could and should be notified if they're not already engaged at the nonprofit level of that. But I guess the larger comment is, we will take advantage of every messaging platform that we can to get that information out. The comments from the assessor about addresses and things could very likely be very helpful. But our intent is to get these dollars, we have a motivation to get these dollars distributed... But our intent is to get these dollars, we have a motivation to get these dollars distributed on a date certain. So we will be doing that and doing everything we can to get that messaging out so people will know that it's out there and they can access it. We'll be hearing from people that live in the Kansas City portion of Clay County, but our provider will then know how to direct them back into the Clay County, or excuse me, the Kansas City environment to access those dollars. It's a pretty efficient process as it's being developed.
I want to go ahead and go to the assessor, but I want to go back to Commissioner Carpenter first, let him kind of go through his thoughts. And I'd like to go to the assessor, I think, had some observations she'd like to make.
Very good. Yeah, I appreciate all the comments. You know, it just, it occurs to me that, you know, folks who are at the lowest income levels are also the folks who are most likely to have the greatest need here. And I think that there's probably good reason to believe that they're also going to be the folks who are the hardest to reach and to make aware that this application opportunity exists. And so, yeah, I just think it's going to be important going forward as we administer and distribute these dollars to make sure that we don't unintentionally do so in a way that the folks who need it the most end up missing out. And I think the marketing component's going to be important. You know, you mentioned the state's doing a lot. And so, you know, a lot of it, though, you mentioned the nonprofits. You know, we've got five selected here in addition to United Way. And so that's why I wonder with these agreements that we have with them, whether it's written in the contract or whether it's just a sense from talking with them or both. But making sure that that's a priority for them to reach out to folks who otherwise might be missed. And I don't know if at the end of this, we'll have, you know, an audit of who received these dollars and who didn't in terms of regional breakdown or, you know, income level breakdown or things like race and gender considerations. But if we do, and it turns out that we, you know, hypothetically, if it turned out that geographically, let's say, that certain communities got significantly more dollars per capita than other communities here in Clay County, or if that happened in other demographic ways, I think we would have some regret over that at the end of this process. So my hope would be to avoid that outcome and, you know, try to be as equitable as we can. But I appreciate the discussion. That's all I've got for now. Thanks.
Let's go ahead and let, because the assessor had sought recognition. If you'd like to go ahead and make your comments, we'll go to the auditor, and then I want to make sure I circle back to Commissioner Thompson.
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor. I just had a question. Will this be applicable to people that live in trailer parks to pay their lot rent? Or is it just for, because a lot of them can afford their mortgage, but the lot rents are pretty high. Would that also be applicable to them? Because we can provide that information, too. Now, there are some trailer parks that have rentals in them. I just don't want those people left out, is all I'm saying. And I don't know if that would be applicable for that or not.
That's a really good question. I'm not sure if the auditor has something that specifically sort of drilled down, but it would also be a good question to relate backup line to those who are putting the money towards, instead of it being to the Treasury Department.
Certainly, I'll bring up that question as well. My initial thought is that it does specifically state that you can't have a mortgage, you can't be a homeowner in. But you're talking about?
Just for a lot.
The lot or the home itself?
No, they own the trailer themselves.
Right. Well, that's a good question. Yeah, I'll pass it up. That's, I'm just speaking to the only guidance I've seen. I mean, it's worth, you know, calling those nonprofits and finding out for sure.
I'm sorry, if we're going to have, we need to make sure everybody has mics so we can get another mic. But secondarily, obviously, the questions need to be addressed to the commission just to keep the conversation organized. So if the--
There's a problem here because apartment complexes are mortgaged. So, I mean, if you can't pay, you're not paying a mortgage per se, but they're paying the rent, which does pay the mortgage. So you might want to get that clarified because nobody would be eligible at that point. A darn few.
Go ahead and use the microphone, Mr. Auditor.
No, I'll just have to research. I'll just say that that's, you know, what I've seen in the guidance. So we can get that answered, though.
Would you mind, you know, assuming that you're able to get some answers, if you could forward that information? Because right now, we don't know, so it's kind of hard to continue that discussion. So if you could, when information becomes available, forward it to the administrator, who will then make sure that we get that information and that we can continue the discussion with some base knowledge of what the program entails.
Well, we can provide you with a lot of information as to how to contact people in my department. It may take a while to figure out how to get it to you or to--
She's way off the rails.
--the nonprofits, but I do have it.
That's great. Commissioner Thompson, I didn't want to leave you out of the conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, it's okay. I'm just sitting here listening to all the really great conversations that we're currently having, and a lot of good questions have come up today. And I would be really interested to get some of those resolved for next meeting. Because I wouldn't want to do anything that would not allow us to properly account for this money, but also, I don't want to put any roadblocks that would interfere with our rollout to getting this assistance out. But I think there are some questions we need some clarification on.
By the way, it needs to be, I think, acknowledged that the auditor and his office have done, along with other people in government, have done a great job on assembling this. And the fact that we are able to request information from you and that you've done such an outstanding job of putting this operation together, certainly, I think I can speak for the commission when I say we appreciate the hard work that your office has been doing, and we appreciate the fact that you're keeping us informed as this process does go forward. So thank you very much for that. Is there anything else to add to this? I think it's, I don't see any way that this does not get on a regular schedule, quite honestly. I did have one follow-up question, and that's the procedural. The counselor had outlined a way to proceed wherein we would take this up and potentially approve it at the next meeting, and that we would have the ability to empower the administrator to go ahead and go forward with the sub-agreements. But I think what I would like is to have the counselor restate that so we have an accurate representation of what we would be looking at.
So here's what my latest recommendation is going to be. Knowing this is going to be on regular, I think I talked with the auditor just a minute ago, I think there's a chance we can have the agreements here next Wednesday. So I would say, let's hold off on answering that question until we see how many or if we have all of the agreements here. If we have them all ready to go and approve, they'll be part of your packet on regular agenda, and we will just move forward with dealing with them. If there is, or are one or two outliers, then we can address how you want to proceed with those.
And obviously, it's something that, working in cooperation with the administrator, can be put together in advance of that meeting. And, you know, as always, administrator, counsel, and everyone else has done, I think, a good job of keeping commission informed. So I don't see any reason to think this would be any different. Are there any other comments before we go to a determination of regular or consent agenda on this item? And we will, of course, have the opportunity to discuss it further at the Wednesday meeting. Is there any objection to this being on regular agenda for next meeting?
And you're still talking about 2021-68?
Yes, 2021-68.
Oh, I think absolutely it should be on the regular.
Very good. Yeah, it seemed obvious, but then again, you know, certainly, I want to make sure we've got everybody's opinion. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your work, Mr. Auditor. Actually, you probably don't need to go very far. The next item is yours, in fact. So that brings us to 2021 Ordinance 12. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 Ordinance 12 is to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year as it relates to some airport funds to the auditor.
Mr. Auditor?
Yes, thank you. So 2021 Ordinance 12 is essentially from the 2021 budget. We've had this in our budget adopting language for quite some time. It is essentially a process to reopen any previous year purchase orders that need to be carried over into the next year because it's a project that the commission can approve. So we had a deadline in 2021 Ordinance 410D of the budget of March 1st, and that was Monday, and that passed. And this is the list of remaining 2020 purchase orders that we determined in working with departments that should be reopened in 2021, taking that prior year encumbrance and then using those dollars in 2021. The four are, one is for an airport project, which the commission previously just approved, I think in the last meeting, for that, for that Phase 2 of the Midwest National Air Center Plan to Bernza McDonald. So reopening that one. The second one is facilities. They're working on a parking lot light, I believe, in the detention or the jail, Re Justice Center. Okay. Thank you to Minister Kuntz for that. So essentially, because of, I think because of pandemic, they had a supply issue. So they had ordered this well before, but they haven't arrived yet. So this would reopen that to get that project done. The third one is, third and fourth are really combined. They are pickup trucks for the highway department used out of their used tax funds that, again, were ordered in advance but still have not arrived. And as we know with highway, we had some really tight budget needs there. So this will ensure that they can be able to pay for those when they arrive. So that's all this is.
Thank you. As far as 2021 Ordinance 12 goes, I think by and large, it seems pretty cut and dry. The only thing that causes me concern is, and I would need to go through it and make sure, but at least one of these items has been the subject of an official action from I have apprehension because I, first off, think that the use of official actions during that era is ill-advised at best. Now, whether that rises to the fact that we should take it up in regular session next time just by virtue of the fact that it has that taint to it, it's not something that I'm, I just want to bring that to the attention of the commission, and I would also like to open it up for any other questions of the auditor. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions?
I have no other questions right this moment. I would prefer to have this put on for regular. Next commission.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you.
If, okay, so we will put this on for regular agenda for next week? Were there any comments from anyone else before we go forward? I see none. That brings us to 2021-67. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-67 is to discuss the establishment of a Clay County Bicentennial Committee, essentially to deal with two celebrations. One, the bicentennial of the state of Missouri that will take place officially in August of this year, and then the upcoming bicentennial for Clay County itself, which will take place in January of 2022.
This was something that I had requested to put on there. I think this is a way we should go forward. The recommendations here are just that. The recommendation is for a nine-member panel. Those members would be, would apply through the typical way that we have all of our boards and commissions soliciting citizens who'd like to participate. There's an online application. My intention, my thought process, is that this would be appropriate to be on regular session since it's something, I think, that requires more discussion. Secondarily, assuming that it gets a favorable vote next week, it would, I think that it would be advisable to allow at least a two-week period to allow interested citizens to express that interest. Under our new constitution, of course, the boards and commission members are nominated by the presiding and then confirmed by the other administrators, and in that process, I consult with the administrator. I think that is always a good thing, and it's my intention to make that consultation one that is rather extensive. Certainly, the administrator has the ability to communicate with other members of the commission and incorporate those into the consultation, I think, that he would have with me on that issue. Are there any, so like I said, my recommendation is to put it on regular agenda just because I think it bears more discussion. It would also be nice to have it discussed at a time when the public is more able, perhaps, to be here and give their input. But I'm, I don't have a particular interest in running this through quickly. I want to make sure that everybody has the ability to talk about this. Something that I would like to explore further would be what mission we would assign to this particular commission with a little more specificity than we have right here. So I would like to get thoughts from the commissioners, whether we are aiming at a specific celebration or whatever, so that when we do solicit members to serve on this board, we can give them a pretty comprehensive sense of what the commission is looking for as they will be advising the commission. I don't anticipate this particular body having, in fact, they would not have any particular ability, they would have no ability to spend county money. That would always reside with the commission before any of that kind of activity would happen. With that, I'll kind of open it up to the commission, see if there are any thoughts or anything they'd like to share. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I only have a couple quick questions, and I think some of these we can also discuss more next week. But you brought up, you know, financial impact. I was just curious to see what we were thinking the financial impact would be to the county for these two celebrations, since we don't have anything budgeted for this year. And the second question I'd have is, so if we create this committee and up for the two-year term, what happens to the committee? Does it just dissolve?
It would dissolve.
Okay.
As far as expenditures, one of the things, and I would like to explore this a little bit more deeply, is perhaps we could solicit the participation of some area businesses, perhaps some kind of sponsorships that would help as far as the costs go. I'm not really sure. I mean, I do have some ideas, don't get me wrong, but I don't want to get overly specific and inadvertently cut off any debate by the commission. I want to leave this as open as possible for the moment so commissioners feel as free as possible to express their opinions. Was there anything else that you had?
No, that's all I had at the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No, this is not, this is not something I've got any strong views on. I support doing it. I think it makes sense, you know, celebrate Clay County's 200th anniversary. Sounds good to me. You know, other than wanting input in terms of who makes up the membership of the committee, obviously, you've got the final determination on that. But, you know, I'll certainly contribute my input on membership to the committee. But beyond that, I don't have any strong views in terms of, you know, what the ultimate celebration should or should not look like.
And as I said, I intend to, on this and other appointments that I would bring forward to the commission for approval, do my, you know, exceed the constitutional requirements that I consult with the administrator, and in fact, make it something that is beyond just the bare bones requirement. And obviously, the administrator has done a very good job of understanding the views of all commissioners, and I think that would be a good method for us to go forward. With that, we will put that on regular agenda. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda for today's meeting. I would entertain a motion to place items on, and this can be made either way. I could have a motion that would have just what goes on regular, and then a second one for what goes on consent. Or I don't know that it really matters much. I could have one that would combine the, Mr. Administrator, excuse me, Mr. Counselor, do you have a preference on that?
In the past, you know, so this is a process we've utilized in the past. Usually, what we did is, we'd have one motion for these items to go on consent, and then another motion for these items to go on regular. I think I remember that it's easier for the clerk's office, for the purposes of amendments to track, but that, you know, either way is fine. One motion-- minutes to track, but that, you know, either way is fine, one motion or two, but typically...
I turn to you on this thing, not so much because of the legal implications, but because this process predates my service, and obviously, that predates the service of the other two commissioners. So let's just go back to the way it was, unless there's some reason to vary from that. So I would entertain a motion to place items on next week's consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to place item 2021-62, item 2021-65, item 2021-66 on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion has been made to place the three items listed on for the consent agenda for next week's meeting discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. I would entertain a further motion related to next week's regular agenda.
I'll make the motion to place 2021 Ordinance 9, 2021-63, 2021-64, 2021 Ordinance 11, ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, 2021-68, 2021 Ordinance 12, and 2021-67 on the regular agenda.
Thank you. Motion has been made to place the listed items on the regular agenda for our next meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our business on today's regular agenda. We will now move to comments on non-agenda items. First off, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items that were not covered under today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who would like to comment on items not on today's agenda?
Yes, sir.
The clerk would like to speak, please proceed.
Sandy Baldwin, County Clerk. I just wanted to give an update as to what our, where the clerk's office has been up to, since this is the third month that we've been, I don't know if I can say, opened up a lot more. We have boxed and moved approximately 100 boxes out of our office to the Record Center, and we have cleaned up our files, which we've started, we did start this some time ago, but we had to put a stop to it because we were short on staff. And then we've got our office cleaned up and arranged, and that was another thing that we had started on and was stopped. And we have just updated our court order program. And I, the biggest item, I think, in the clerk's office that I really do want to mention is the constitution, the change that's coming to our county, and particularly to the assessor's office and to the clerk's office. All the Board of Equalization hearing dates have changed. All the aggregate values will be late, well, not late, it's moved back one month. And I've been talking to the state as to how we will be able to reach out to all the taxing entities in Clay County, and the state's working on a video to assist all the public subdivisions and the schools and all the boards in the county with the changes, and will help answer the questions. And the dates now for BOE, or to put your, get your appeal in, if anybody's interested, the dates now are from May 1st to July 12th by 5:00 p.m. to accept appeals. And the hearings will start thereafter, shortly thereafter, and they'll be held until August 28th, or until the board decides that we need more time, depending on how, the number of hearings. And we are planning a meeting with the board to go over the changes and answer any, help with any questions that anyone may have, and we, you all, are invited to attend to that meeting as soon as we set it. And the big, another big thing that the, I think that the county should applaud themselves for is that we have had 36 sunshine requests, and not one cost of this has been to the county. And Mr. Graham has been invaluable in helping with these requests. And we have been training each other. Everybody is learning everybody's job, and we're trying to make the clerk's office more efficient. We've sworn in more than 75 sheriff deputies this last month. We have three new members in the clerk's office that now can notarize documents for the citizens in Clay County at no charge. And I want to thank the commissioners for giving us the budget to be able to employ these people, and so we can move forward in what our office needs to do. And I would like to thank Commissioner Thompson for taking the lead and getting our office in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to also make sure that we repeat and disseminate the information on property tax appeals and the BOE a number of times. So certainly, we want to make sure that that information is out there and available for citizens.
We've already changed that on the website, so...
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Are there any office holder comments to be made? I see none. Are there any agencies who would like to make comments? I see none. That brings us to county administrator comments. Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
None.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything that you would like to make comment on?
I do. Thank you, Commissioner. Now, in my opinion, the previous corrupt commission broke sunshine law. They have wasted taxpayer money, and they tried to get away with it. And this new commission has reversed this course by making transparency and accountability a top priority. We take seriously our roles as servant leaders and good stewards of taxpayer money, and that is why it is my pleasure to announce that the lawsuit between the Kansas City Star and Clay County is coming to an end. The previous commission wrongfully withheld information about its wasteful spending on high-priced lawyers. And in my opinion, these corrupt politicians and their cronies should be ashamed. True public servants should welcome independent oversight. Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Carpenter, and myself are happy to be able to resolve these issues on behalf of our community, so we can rebuild the trust in our Clay County government.
Thank you very much. Did you have any other comments on any other issues?
That was it today. I just wanted to make sure we had that fully announced, that this is all coming to an end. One more thing.
I think that's it. I think that was great, and I appreciate you making that statement. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Well, you know, I'll just add that I am thrilled that a lot of these unnecessary lawsuits are coming to an end. You know, we were able to announce last week the resolution of the lawsuit appealing all of our previous county lawsuit losses with regard to resisting the audit. You know, I don't think we ought to have done that in the first place. I'm glad we, as a commission, were able to put an end to that in conjunction with our county counselor, and I'm very happy that the same thing is happening with this sunshine lawsuit with the Kansas City Star. You know, I think we're all committed to open and transparent government, and part of that means not only fully complying with state audits that are called for by the citizens and, you know, called for under statute, but in addition to that, complying with the sunshine law and, you know, when entities like the Kansas City Star want information that they are owed under the law, we ought to provide it. We shouldn't put up fights and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then, of course, ultimately, over time, millions of dollars in unnecessary legal costs. So it's definitely a new era in Clay County government, and once again, happy to be a part of it.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say that I totally agree with the comments made by both associate commissioners. I would add on to that, that it is, on a personal note, that it is a great pleasure to deal with commissioners who have not only expressed that opinion about the openness and the transparency of government, but are putting that commitment into action. So I certainly appreciate the associate commissioners and what they are doing. The other bonus, I guess, of this is not just the fact that we are clearing up past lawsuits, which I think were, which were entered into in an ill-advised manner, but also the attitude of this commission, I think, makes it less likely, to a very large degree, that we are going to find ourselves in those kinds of situations. Again, I think this commission would not, not only is clearing up old, old issues, but I think this commission is less inclined to enter into some of those ill-advised decisions, which have put us in a rather bad spot. So I just want to say again how much I appreciate the associate administrators. Obviously, our counselor has done a great job on efficiently running us through the legal knots that have been tied somewhat tightly and resolved them. And obviously, the administrator has also been there, making sure that we are able to move this county forward and avoid some of these pitfalls. So certainly, I think we've assembled an excellent team to go forward in the best interest of this county. So thank you very much to all involved. That brings us to approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes for February 11, 2021. I will give commissioners a moment to review if they would like. As I say, I've said in the past, these minutes are distributed to commissioners in advance, so they have, in fact, reviewed them. This is just one more opportunity to give it one more little look-see before we move forward on that. Is there a motion related to the minutes of Thursday, February 11, 2021, 10:00 a.m. meeting?
I remember that we approved the minutes from February 11, 2021.
Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of February 11, 2021, 10:00 a.m. meeting discussion. Seeing none. Commissioner Carpenter, if you'd like to close?
I'll close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
Thank you. That concludes approval of the minutes. That brings us to written reports. Are there any written reports to be submitted to the commission at this time?
We had three this week. I emailed each one of you, plus the administrator, a copy of the auditor's monthly report on a cash basis, the clerk's month report for fees and revenue, and the clerk's, or, excuse me, the collector's annual report or settlement. And if you did not receive those, I would be glad to get you a copy.
Have commissioners received those reports? Okay, seem to get consensus that yes, they have. Thank you very much for that. That brings us to executive sessions. According to the amended agenda that we are working under today, we have been, we have gone, we have included, I should say, a number-two contractual under executive sessions. Is that correct?
Real estate.
Real estate, I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction. So we are, we are to meet under the state statute, sub-two, real estate. Is there a motion related to going into executive session and adjourning therefrom?
That we go into executive session and adjourn therefrom?
Motion has been made to go into executive session under real estate, sub-two, in the sunshine law, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes?
Thank you. We will go into executive session and adjourn therefrom. Thank you very much.